All right, council, the six o'clock, so I'll call it January eighteenth of twenty twenty-two remote meeting for West Richardson City Council to order at six P M. And before we call the roll, I'll ask Stephanie to read our virtual meeting ground rules and then go ahead and call the roll.
All right, thank you. Please make sure the name shown at the bottom of your video view is the name you would like the mayor to use. You can change this by right clicking on the three dots in the upper corner of your video view and clicking rename. If you have an unstable internet connection, please also connect through the phone. That will allow you to continue to participate even if you lose internet connection. If you call in after you've joined on video, click the arrow between mute and video, and there is a button for switch to phone audio. Clicking this button provides a participant I D. Please call in with that I D as then your phone is associated with your video. We will mute everyone until a designated comment period, and when the chair asks for public comments, if you raise your hand, your virtual hand, he will call on you and you will be unmuted. To virtually raise your hand, click on participants and then click on raise hand. If you are participating by phone only, press asterisk nine to raise your hand. All right, roll call. Brent Gary.
Here.
Richard Bloom.
Here.
Fred Brink.
Yeah.
David Fettow.
Yeah.
May Hayes.
Here.
Uh, John Smart.
Yeah.
Ken Stoker. Is connecting to audio. All right.
Well, he's connecting to audio. We see that he's here, so we'll go ahead and let him go with that one.
And then it looks like Kate's joining us right now. So I will mark her present as soon as she logs in.
Okay, very good. And then with that, I'd like to ask Councilmember Bloom to lead us in the pleasure of allegiance this evening. Please give Stephanie some time to mute everybody. And then I'll turn it over to you.
I brought my flag.
Perfect.
I guess I'll start over again. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, thank you, Councilman. Much appreciated. Uh, council, the agenda is before you. We have one item to add to the agenda this evening, which will require an executive session. Pursued R C W forty-two thirty-one ten C related to the minimum price which real estate can be offered for sale or lease. With that, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Mister Mayor, I move to approve the agenda as amended.
I have a motion and a second by John. Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 The pose like sign, motion carry. Thank you, council. We don't have any presentations this evening, so that moves to our consent agenda this evening, which includes the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on January fourth, two thousand twenty-two. Motion to authorize the mayor to execute a mutual aid and assistance agreement for Washington State for infrastructure, water, white wastewater agency or response network, well known as Warren. Uh, motion to award herbicide application services contract. Motion to authorize the mayor to execute amended and restated reimbursement agreement with Benton R E A for the curb cooperative way project. Resolution oh three twenty-two authorize the mayor to execute interlocal agreement with Benton County for ortho photos of West Richland. Resolution oh four twenty-two authorize the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement with Benton County for solid waste management. Resolution oh five twenty-two setting public hearing date for petition for a frontage improvement waiver for Van Geeson. And a motion authorized the mayor to execute professional services contract with Osborne Consulting for non-vegetated biofiltration swale research study. And a resolution oh six twenty-one amending the master fee schedule effective date correction for garbage rates. Now with that, is there anyone from the audience who would like to speak to the consent agenda this evening? Please raise your virtual hand. Or star nine if you're by phone. Stephanie, I do not see anyone. Do you?
I do not see anyone, no.
Hey, with that, council, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda this evening?
I move to approve. And agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Hold the sign, please. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, council. Well, this is the first opportunity for citizen public comment for any items that are not on the agenda this evening. If you'd like to address council, if you would please raise your virtual hand or star nine if you're by phone. And I look across the board. And I see we have Mister Barker Baker, excuse me, for an items that are not related to the agenda this evening. Stephanie, would you go ahead and unmute him?
There we go. Um, so I'm not, I may have missed tracking on the agenda or not, but but my comment is kind of triggered by the uh action at on six oh eight Austin with regard to um a variance on the sidewalk improvements, uh, which are normally.
Yeah, that that will be coming a little bit later where you can have opportunity to make comment on that item, sir.
All right, later on will be great. Thanks.
Yep, there'll be a, there'll be a public hearing and you could give testimony for that public hearing here shortly. Matter of fact, very shortly. Okay, perfect. See, see anyone else, Stephanie?
I do not see anyone else, no.
Okay, very good. So then we will go ahead and move on to items eight A and B, uh, which are a public hearing and a resolution granting a frontage improvement waiver for six oh eight Austin Drive. Uh, with that, I'll ask Mister Slade to make his staff report presentation this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. So council, what you have before you is a, the property owner at six oh eight Austin Drive was issued a building permit for an addition alteration or repair to existing building or structure on the property that exceeded fifty percent of the value of the existing building or structure. And as such, is not eligible for an exemption under West Richmond Municipal Code twelve oh four oh three oh, uh, which requires the property owner to complete frontage improvements. Uh, in this case to Austin Drive, and these improvements would be required prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy or uh, if they were successful in obtaining a waiver by petitioning to council for these improvements. The ordinance codified in twelve oh four outlines the process for them to petition and the, and the method. The petition was received by the city on November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, city council was required to adopt a resolution fixing a time and place for a public hearing on this waiver. Uh, resolution sixty twenty-one adopted on December seventh, twenty twenty-one, established today, Tuesday, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. City council meeting is the time a public hearing will occur on the petition. At, at, at the public hearing, council will take public comment on the issue and then determine if a frontage improvement waiver will or will not be approved. If the frontage improvement waiver is approved, council may place conditions on the waiver as appropriate. Uh, per our uh, code, notices were mailed to the abutting property owners within six hundred feet of the property. The property itself was posted and notices were also posted in several locations around the city by the city clerk as required. Uh, council, per municipal code can grant a waiver. As long as it's with or without conditions, excuse me. Uh, the findings at the waiver from the terms and requirements that will no way be detrimental, best interest of the city will not be contrary to its intent or public safety, public interest, health, safety and welfare, and where do, do special considerate conditions or acceptable characteristics of the subject property or little enforcement of this chapter results in practical difficulties, unnecessary hardships. So if you're familiar with Austin Drive, it's an older neighborhood off of Bombin Range. Uh, some of it backs up to the existing CID canal. Um, it would, the zoning is RL forty. Um, and so there's some larger lots down there. It's a rural, what we would consider a rural roadway. No curb gutter sidewalks, uh, RL forty zoning doesn't require that. Uh, if it was platted out today, uh, RL forty would be still be a rural roadway. Uh, it would be thirty-two feet wide. Uh, no curb and gutter, roadside ditches and street lights would be the current city standard. So what the property owner uh, is done with the building permit, again, it's a smaller house. Uh, council has put a number of exemptions in the frontage improvement waiver process. Uh, the fact that it's a small house and it's like over a two thousand square foot addition to it, it exceeds that fifty percent threshold value that's been established, and so they have to go through this formal process. Uh, again, uh, what are, all, we're asking for waivers uh, for widening the road, overlaying the road, putting additional signage uh, and in installing uh, streetlights. The other items uh, were listed just to provide clarification, curb gutter sidewalks and stuff, but the zoning wouldn't have required that. So that was just added to make sure there's no mistake of what's, what the waiver is covering. Council is recommending approval of the waiver uh, with a condition. Uh, this is similar to what we've done other ones. Uh, is because it doesn't make sense, you know, to have one property owner widen the property or do the streetlights in front of his property. Uh, what makes sense is a, what we do is a local improvement district where the neighborhood comes together and decides that these type of improvements are wanted in their neighborhood. And you go through the local improvement district. Uh, what staff is recommending is approving this waiver, uh, conditioned on the property owner waiving his rights to protest uh, a future L I D in the next ten years should one be put together and petitioned to the city. So they would become an automatic yes vote for that, for these type of improvements, which we're issuing the waiver. So then that's in, included in the resolution. There's also a copy of that waiver, and we've used this on other developments. Typically with sore plats and other developments where we've issued these waivers uh, or their rights to protest a future L I D. So um, I want to note for the record that we did receive some advanced uh, public comment, which is great. Typically, we don't receive any, so this is, this is great that we received three. All three were in support of the waiver. Two are actually live on Austin Drive, so I just, I won't read them. You were provided them uh, from a Dan and Pam Ritchie. Um, there was also a Miss Miller that provided comment and support, and then Mister Baker who's on here uh on tonight also provided a comment and support. He also had some other uh, comments that separate from the waiver, but did support this waiver for the six oh eight Austin Drive. So I, Stephanie, did we receive any other public comment other than the three I mentioned?
Uh, we did not, no.
Okay.
Yeah, great. Thank you, Roscoe. Appreciate it. Uh, so with that, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing at six fourteen. If you would like to provide comments, please raise your virtual hand or star nine by phone. And a city clerk will unmute you. Please state your name and city of residence for the record. So I see Mister Baker, you have your hand up, and Stephanie, would you please unmute him? Sir.
Cool. Thanks, everybody. Uh, thanks for the opportunity to speak. Um, yeah, I do favor allowing this property owner the exemption. I did send an email. Um, but I, uh, Roscoe's comments slightly anticipate perhaps the idea that I would kind of like to encourage uh, when you mentioned the L I D for making uh uh, the kind of improvements that are called for in the, in the code. I would like to see a lot of these older neighborhoods, uh, actually, yeah. After I sent that email, it occurred to me that I should mention that I live in one of these older neighborhoods and would benefit from this. Um, receiving sidewalks, uh, my own street is an older county road uh, that's been converted to a city street. Uh, and it does not have sidewalks and curbs and gutters and that sort of thing. Uh, and since it's a pretty straight road, uh, people tend to drive kind of fast on there. It'd be kind of nice to have a sidewalk so that when I'm out walking my dogs, I don't have to walk in the middle of the street. Um, a lot of these older neighborhoods would benefit from that as well. Uh, and so I'd kind of like to see the city maybe push a little harder for, uh, I don't know if it's L I Ds or if it's other means of funding. Uh, bring in some encouragement for people to be uh, walking and riding their bikes and stateboards and stuff like that in their neighborhoods, uh, instead of pushing everybody into cars. I think on that, the city might save some money. Uh, and it would make our community better and it would fit in better with our existing um uh, comprehensive plan. So that's just my observation is maybe we could improve the process a little bit so that more of these neighborhoods got some improvements.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Stephanie, do you see anyone else?
I do not, no.
Yeah, that I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at six sixteen. Uh, resolution oh seven twenty-two, council, do I have a motion?
In council, I want to let you know the motion that's in the packet didn't include the words that it's conditioned on the uh, the resolution's correct, the motion on the staff report is not that you're granting the frontage improvement waiver uh, has conditioned on the uh signing the waiver protest. That makes sense.
I move to pass resolution oh seven twenty-two granting a frontage waiver for frontage improvements to Austin Drive per West Richland Municipal Code twelve oh four oh six oh for the property owners of six oh eight Austin Drives associated with building permit for addition alteration or air to the existing building or structure on the property, subject to the condition of participating in future L I D activities.
Second.
Yeah, a motion and a second, uh, council, any questions, comments amongst yourselves in this item?
Uh, yes, Mister Mayor, um, I had some messaging, had a discussion with Mister Slade. I guess my, my point is possibly of future discussion of complete streets. Um, this area is a low density street, uh, or low density housing area. Uh, and as such, would typically have a unimproved uh, or at least a rural section roadway, much like uh, exists up in various subdivisions like the lakes, the uh, polo club, section six, parts of section eight. And as such the complete street upgrade is, I, I think we might want to revisit our code as to how to handle those streets other than you know, asking for waivers on all of these. When we get into more lowered higher density or mid, medium density areas, um complete streets, you know, such as a brotherhood or something of that nature. Um, I somewhat agree that, you know, trying to find a balance to provide sidewalks is important. Uh, especially in some of these higher density areas. So I, I don't think we have a, a good plan for, you know, retrofitting some of our areas and, and I think Mister Baker's uh, comments are, are somewhat along that way. Uh, it's, it's, we, we need something that's not an all or nothing. And that's, that's really what it comes down to. So that's my two bits up for it.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Smart.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mister Mayor, council, audience. Um, my concern is only with that last sort of amendment to the motion about um, the consideration where the owner would automatically be a yes vote in future L I D um, proposals. What may I ask, uh, Roscoe, uh, maybe you can answer this. What, what happens if the, if it changes ownership? How does that agreement work? So the house gets sold next year, for example, and then five years down the road, L I D is proposed.
It's actually a Bronson question. Good thing it's here, but I've got it in front of me, so I'll, I'll see.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, is there accommodation for that or not?
It, it actually, it's anticipated. There's actually language in that that runs with the land, so future owners would be.
Okay.
I thought, I thought Bronson had covered that, so in the agreement with, because that question's come up. It's a good question.
Okay, um, yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm not thrilled with forcing somebody into a yes on that. Um, I, I won't oppose this. I do, I do agree that the, that we should provide the, the waiver. But I, but I'm a little, it's a little sticky to, to ask somebody to agree to something or to run with the land for an event that might happen ten or fifteen, twenty years down the road. It's, it's just, it just seems, uh, frankly, in my opinion, it's unnecessary, but like I said, I won't let that skew my vote. I'll just voice that opinion. Um, I, I think that then to comment on, um, you know, the, the topic that, that uh Richard was just talking about and Mister Baker brought up, I I, I think that, that we also, I, I do think we need to address this because this is going to happen over and over again when these low density homes make improvements on their property and then they have to ask for a waiver. Because we placed this, um, complete streets requirements on, on everybody's sort of blanket coverage. And it just doesn't fit in many neighborhoods. On, on the other hand, I, I agree that the city ought to make, um, we should review the sort of quote unquote educational materials we have for our public, um, and our citizens to review when they want to get together as a neighborhood and start an L I D. Um, I, I just think that it's a, I, I don't know if there's a, um, maybe this is something that we could put in one of our utility inserts, um, or something like this, so that those people that under, I, I think we had mentioned this actually in the last couple of years. I don't remember exactly, but the idea would be to let people know that if they want sidewalks and streetlights and a widened street and curb and gutter and the whole bit, that, that somebody has to pay for that. And as a neighborhood, that's their responsibility. It's, it's, everybody in the city right now has streets and sidewalks and, and streetlights that they paid for, whether it was through their developer and the house that they bought or whether they built their own home and paid for it out of the pocket. Um, there's a few exceptions on main arteries and, and the state highway, but but I just think there's a misconception that um, that somehow the dollars that it takes to build a street and sidewalks and and uh, streetlights just sort of come out of, out of the ether and they don't, they come out of your pocket. They come out of the pocket of the people whose properties are adjacent to those facilities. So but I would encourage us to make sure that it's clear and, and easy for a neighborhood to get together, organize and, and start an L I D. Think we could see a lot of improvements, whereas right now I think people sort of scratch their heads and go like, gee, I wish I had a better street or I wish I had streetlights. And they might not even know how to ask the question, you know, how to get started. So that would be my, um, two cents on how we could, you know, improve our roadways uh, for those neighborhoods that want those improvements. Thank you for your time. That's all my, that's all my comments. I do support this action.
Thank you, Councilman Smart. Much appreciated. Mayor Pro Tim Bray.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, I too support resolution zero seven dash two two, but uh, listening to the comments of Councilmember Bloom and Councilmember Smart, I do think it is prudent that one of the items we look at for future discussion is a more detailed review or workshop on complete streets. And as Mister Smart mentioned, I too would advocate that we uh, use our mailer or another form of public outreach to educate the citizens on what their options are. That's all I have, sir. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Bray. Councilmember Moran.
Thank you very much. Yes, um, I would definitely like to echo what the other council members have said, and thank you, Mister Baker, for what you said. Before I talk a little bit more about that, I do have a question that came up when thinking about that. I was taking the thought process that Councilmember Smart had and kind of following past that. So if we were to have on a street, people that have signed a waiver saying that if there is an L I D that they are an automatic yes, could we get to the point where there are so many that are automatic yeses that one single person could request an L I D? And that L I D is automatically a yes. Is that a feasible, possible situation?
So, uh, local improvement districts are formed two different ways.
Hmm.
Um, you can do it by a petition method, method to council. Typically, then that takes, goes through a process where you need to have a majority, fifty percent plus one um, to be formed. Uh, even at that level, council does not have to form it. You could have seventy percent of the people petition. And consequences still say no. Um, the other thing is it can be, an L I D can be initiated by council. You can initiate that process and get the ball rolling. Uh, then it's a little different, then you need the residents to come forward to these public hearings to stop the ball and say, no, they don't want the L I D. So, uh, so there's two different ways that you can go through this. Uh, typically, um, in West Richmond, over the last twenty years, we've done them where there'd been a citizen initiative where they, uh, met with staff, we go informally through the process with them. Let them know what the process is, what the costs are. That's usually where it ends when they see the cost. Um, it's, you know, and alls I can tell them is when we want to talk in five years from now, it'll be even more. Uh, unfortunately, this stuff doesn't get cheaper. Um, but then let them know if they want to continue forward, that starts the ball rolling and uh we, we outline, so in an informal setting, they understand how to either keep pushing the ball forward or how to stop that ball. Um, and it takes their participation, but we outline that upfront. And so uh, I, I've got the comments here on local improvement districts and information on, on that. Um, like I said, a lot of people are interested. It's, it's usually when it comes down to the payment is where people are get upset or feel that somehow that should be paid for by the city. And, you know, I wish, I wish we had a printing machine in the back that we can do this, but this is the, you know, the residents' funding and uh, our biggest shortfall right now is just maintaining what we've got as far as the payment, uh, let alone doing these type of improvements. But we can start the discussion and see how this fits into complete streets and, and whatnot. Um, as far as uh, frontage waivers, just to make sure it's clear, this right to uh uh, protest an L I D in the future is only for ten years. That's a state law that only requires that. So after ten years, if, if it hasn't happened, it's, it's uh, becomes void, the agreement. That's not a forever thing. Um, and the, there was one other point. Oh, uh, complete, or, excuse me, the fringe waivers. So there are a number of exemptions in the code, so while we got, we just did a resolution set another public hearing, there aren't too frequent. Most of the time, the exemptions the council has set in the code apply. It's just, this was a small house that they were having a, uh, you know, double in the size of it that, that triggered it, the, to make a more formal process. Otherwise, uh, had it been a two thousand square foot house and they did a five hundred square foot addition or just remodeled inside, they would have been automatically exempted from these improvements. So I think uh, we can take a look at those and see if we need to add to those exemptions, but uh, for the most part, these type of things are captured through the exemptions in the code. So.
Gotcha. So, but back to my question, though, I'm wondering, uh, because I've got a bunch more that I've got to talk about this. So my question is with, with the uh, waivers that have happened and with people being automatic guesses, is it possible that one person could create a request for an L I D? And these people are automatic yeses, correct, for the, for however long this uh, ten, ten year period is starting from when it happens, correct?
Yes, or council could initiate it. If you've got enough of these uh, rights to protest in an area, council could initiate an L I D to move forward with it. Um, and the ones that have had these waivers would be automatic guesses. The only thing that could protest is if they thought there was a um, error or miscalculation on their fair share of what they need to pay. But they would be basically a yes vote. So that is correct, Councilman Moran. Unfortunately, there's not a lot of these around. There, there's, there's not a lot of these around.
Right.
So.
Okay, that's good to hear. Okay, that's good to hear. Um, I would be concerned were, um, a lot of them around, and I feel like especially in the less dense areas, that could be a possibility, especially people possibly building up more now since prices of lumber isn't gonna go down anywhere, but I, I would say that.
I was gonna say, I can go figure out how many we've got, it's probably a handful of them that are out there with this type of thing, or whether it was approved with a subdivision, so there's not a lot of them. But that's something we can probably compile and just send out as an F Y I to council, but, um, I'd say it's less than, there, there, there's a handful spread out through the community.
Okay, and, and I would love if, if that's something that we could do, I really do see that, um, thank you very much for that. Uh, going back to what Mr. Baker and what Councilmember Bloom and what, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Brink was saying, and Councilmember Smart, I definitely agree, we gotta look back at this, and I know that there is a push for L I D. There, it isn't the only thing, it is the most feasible way, but my concern is that in a lot of these neighborhoods, especially our, our more established neighborhoods, if we were to push forward and say, okay, we've got to get L I Ds for this, and, reasoning, it is unsafe to have streets that don't have sidewalks, especially if you have children that are going to be walking in the sidewalks and whatnot. But my concern is that a lot of these residents are are a situation where they aren't going to be able to afford, as you said, the extremely high price of putting in these sidewalks, and I, as I had forwarded to, uh, I believe it was to Mr. Slade and also to the mayor, uh, as M R S C had said, that is something the city can do. Now, whether or not the city can afford it is something entirely different. However, it, L I Ds are not the only thing, I would love to see education going out about L I Ds so that people understand more about it. I'm wondering if there is any way that we could work towards putting together, um, some sort of educational video about it, I'm more than happy to offer my assistance in doing that. I have a little bit of experience with video training, creating that, um, I'm sure that other cities might have something similar, or maybe W C or M R S C might have something that is on a video format, I know that not a lot of people might read the inserts. But I definitely think we need to really look at this, uh, folks need to understand that L I Ds aren't all, aren't the end all be all, however, it's going to be very difficult to find the money in the budget if the city were to decide to put forward something for a small area, uh, so I just would like to mention that, but I definitely would love to move forward, would try and help folks make sure that their streets are A D A compliant and that people are safe on their streets and don't have to ride their bikes, their their kids don't have to ride their bikes in the middle of it, that's all I got, thank you.
You, Councilmember Blue?
Um, well, Roscoe cleared one of the questions up, or, or one that was up as far as the ten years for the duration on the, uh, on the participation L I D. But, uh, what that triggered my mind was back to the question of complete streets, if you have an L I D, when it's petitioned, can we, does, does, do the citizens have the ability to say what the L I D would cover, I mean, such as, or does, is it, you know, if it's an area that would typically have a complete street, um, you know, in does that mean it has to be the complete street design? Or in the case of Austin, it's a rural roadway, does it have to be the full, uh, sidewalk scudder, et cetera?
Um, so, if, geez, loaded question, so it, it's not an all or nothing, but if you are in a, it depends on your zoning, so if you're in R M ten, and it was an old neighborhood that was county, came into the city, uh, if you came in for an L I D, you, you're not gonna pick the roadway with, you're not gonna pick your sidewalk with, it'll be, this is what the city standards are. Um, you know, we're not gonna let them pick and choose, we have city standards with that, especially if we're gonna take over the maintenance of it. But Austin Drive is probably a unique one, it's R L forty. Um, those residents may not necessarily want a wider road, up to thirty-two feet, but I could see them petitioning for an L I D to add streetlights per our standard, and that would be more than acceptable, so I don't think it's an all or nothing. Um, but it gets more trickier when you get in the higher density, that, uh, you know, um, would we allow them to put just sidewalks in and not the, um, streetlights, uh, you know, that's something we, but hasn't been approached, but we can definitely have that discussion.
Uh, I was thinking more of sidewalks on one side, I mean, we have some neighborhoods such as, uh,
Well, if, if you were on the other side of the road, do you wanna pay for that sidewalk, it's not in front of your property? You know, that's usually what the problem is, is, uh, if, if the improvements are on one side of the road, then everybody expects that side of the road to pay for it. Um, you know, I've got quite a bit of history with Austin Drive. In twenty-three years, uh, I've tried a couple L I Ds down there, whether it's been, uh, trying to get the water main or sewer down there. And if you had a good well, that didn't have problems, you didn't wanna pay for the, uh, water main, or vice versa, if your septic was working good and you weren't having problems, and somebody else was, then they didn't wanna pay for the sewer. Um, and so that's been some of the, the issues, is getting neighborhoods to get that super majority that, to want these type of improvements, but we'll work on it, we'll get some information, uh.
I look at Arington as an example, Arington has almost complete sidewalk on one side, almost.
Where's Ar- yeah.
Arington, I mean, up, up on, you know, by King, on King Hill area.
Yeah, I mean, there's some older neighborhoods that got built with a curb and gutter, but didn't get streetlights or sidewalks, you know, so they can come in and they can do that if that was important to them. Um, so, I mean, there's, there's a lot of opportunity here to have further discussion on it, um, and, and look at it, how, how we wanna fit this in. Um, yeah, everybody wishes they had the money to go and help these residents do that, um, there are processes that if you are truly, um, low income, uh, there are methods to get these assessments deferred through local improvement district. So there are ways, um, but in most cases, people just want it for free. And that, and that's a tough one, um, you're gonna see a payment preservation plan come before council, it's got millions of dollars of deferred maintenance in our existing transportation system, you're gonna see millions of dollars of A D A uh, stuff in our existing, so starting another program where council, uh, participates in these kind of things, that would be a good discussion to have, and it may help incentivize if, even if you threw in twenty percent of the cost, it, it may help these neighborhoods to do these type of improvements, especially if it's important to them, they're saying it's unsafe and they want these improvements. You know, they'll, they'll, they'll pay for them, but a lot of times, people tell you, it's fine, just the way it hits, just, you know, come fix the potholes or whatever. Anyway, I don't wanna get sidetracked off the waiver we have before us, but I've got notes to, to bring this discussion up and at a future time, so I, I've got those notes, so thank you.
Councilmember Smart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll try to be quick, um, is there a minimum, are there a minimum number of homes required in a neighborhood to initiate an L I D? Can two people get together, do you have to have fifty percent of the block, what's the number?
So, it's really tricky that there's a lot of fixed costs with setting up a local improvement district. So, economy of scale, um, it really depends if council has, if the city has funding available to do an interfund loan, so some of those L I Ds we did years ago, uh, in section six, we actually borrowed the money from the utility, so we were able to give a better rate, because that money wasn't needed for a capital improvement until, uh, out ten, fifteen years. So if you're able to use city funds out of a different fund to fund it internally, uh, you, you can do that, but there's economy of scale. If you don't have funds available and you actually have to go out and get a bond, then the threshold's about a million dollars, otherwise the fixed cost with everything, getting the bonding and financing doesn't make it. So, million dollars used to be the threshold for bond funding, if you can do it internal, there's really no limit, I mean, you can go and do five homes, six homes, you know, if that's.
Well, I'm just trying to, well, I was just exploring the rules there, because like Kate was alluding to, if you get, say, two neighbors and they both end up with these, uh, uh, giving up their right to protest, all of a sudden, you know, you, you've got two, I, I don't think you do an L I D with one person, but you could do it with two properties, or is there a rule against that?
No, ti- you know, and typically, a lot of times, the look at it is, um, is there an opportunity to get financing through something else? Because unfortunately, you get the city involved, everything's now prevailing, wage it costs more. Some of the smaller ones, we've had, uh, neighbors get together, hire their own engineering, do home equity loans and, and pay for that, that worked out, it was cheap. Yeah, lo- local improvement district is just a finance mechanism, that's all it is.
So, so neighbors can do this on their own?
With the city, they still have to get their plans approved and.
Oh, they have to get their plans approved, yeah, but otherwise, okay.
Yeah, John, L I D is just a finance mechanism.
Yeah, so for those audience members that are interested in different ways, you know, you can just get together as neighbors, um, get your plans approved and go forward, and then I think that, that precipitates the discussion of what standards they have to meet, which we can talk about later, as you've noted, as you've noted, and, and how our, our standards might vary in different residential districts, different zoning areas. Um, and then, and then whether or not, and, and I guess that just all falls in line, like, could somebody choose to do street widening and asphalt sidewalks instead of a concrete sidewalk, for example? These are things we should talk about in the future, because in some neighborhoods, that may, might make all the sense in the world, and it would alleviate some of the safety problems that we have and not drive everybody broke. So, I, I really would like to have those discussions, we've kind of touched on this before, I think it's important, and I think it's been mentioned by council members tonight, that's, it's probably gonna continue. Uh, and then I guess the, the last thing I wanna mention is that, um, I mean, I just wanna bring this up again, uh, is, if, if there's happens to be a consensus among council, I would actually prefer that we remove the, uh, the protest right, um, from this agreement that we're, that we're asking, or that we're being asked to approve tonight. But again, I'll say that if, if I don't have other council members who feel that way, I, I will still, uh, vote to approve the action, but but honestly, I, I don't feel the need to place this, uh, contingency on there that forces this property owner, even within just the next ten years, to vote yes on an L I D, which pretty much takes their voice away from whatever potential future negotiations or, or, you know, situations that may evolve in the next ten years, I just, I just don't see the need to do that, I, I mean, I, I'm willing to give him the waiver, you know, and literally make it a waiver, and when the future comes up and somebody's neighbors get together and want an L I D, or they wanna do a private, uh, development improvement, I, I just don't see the reason why he shouldn't be able to either, to participate with his voice, her voice, to say yes or no. So, I just throw that out there, if there's any council members that feel the same, please speak up, otherwise, we'll just move forward.
Councilmember Farrow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, along the lines, um, and this is Bronson or Roscoe. Should this property sell, let's say in the next year, let's say he does this two thousand square foot addition, now the house is worth X number more than the other, anyway, this is a deed restriction, so anybody buying this is going to see this on the deed from the title, prelim title before they go into contract, correct? If it's real, if he does a job, they'll know this is there, so they're not surprised down the road, again, assuming they've done their due diligence, they will see this, correct?
Bronson, you wanna respond to that? Get him unmuted there, and then Bronson can respond.
Okay.
Go ahead.
That, that's correct, since it'll be, uh, a deed restriction, it'll be on the title, and so if the property is sold, it'll, it'll show up on the title report, and, uh, and so the uh, the, the purchaser should be, will see it, and so they'll be on notice.
So that, that's something that has gone through from the title company when they're researching it, uh, when they're doing a title search, and then they make that information aware to the potential buyers, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, so, it's there, and they will know about it before they write the big check. Okay, thank you, David, for clarification, you got a little expertise in that field, and Bronson for your legal advice as regards to that as well, anything else, David?
No, that's all.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moran, one more time?
Yes, thank you, uh, so, I wanted to, three things, one, I want folks to remember that, uh, just because people really, really, really wanna have sidewalks, doesn't mean they're gonna be able to afford it. I could want a pony and I'm not gonna be able to afford it, so, even if it meant safety for my fam- family, I would, um, throwing that out there, I'm curious, uh, we, somebody was talking about, I can't remember who, I apologize, but sidewalks only on one side, I noticed that on Gray Street. Um, I was wondering, and, and we don't have to discuss it now, I know that this is last minute questions, and I apologize for that, but if we could learn a little bit more about what happened on Gray Street with that sidewalk, because it is only on one side, and I would imagine to the school, and it was for safety purposes, um, and a lot of that is along a park there, but I would love to hear more about that, and it can be at a later time, you don't have to do it now, um, but I, but that is something I would like to hear, I also am wondering, for the ten year waiving the right to say no, what again are the reasons that we are having them sign, could you, I guess, go a little bit more into why we would want to have somebody sign that?
Uh, answer your first question, it's, those were done with Safe Routes to School Grants, partnerships with the Richardson School District that got those in, um, over on Deer and, uh, Gray. Um, what was your second question, I'm sorry, Kate, the?
That's okay, that was actually my second question, uh, no worries, I know, um, the other question was, when it comes to that uh, waiving the right to say no, where they're an automatic yes, uh, what were the specific reasons for having that, and the fact that it's only for ten years?
Yeah, so, a- again, this was a way, councils had discussions on this, that you want these type of improvements, but it doesn't make sense to piecemeal, to try to go and build them a hundred foot at a time, and make this all work and be consistent. Uh, it didn't make sense, and so it made sense to do it all at once through a local improvement district. And so, we're not saying we don't want these improvements, we're gonna say it doesn't make sense to piecemeal, so we're gonna give you a waiver, if the neighbors get together in the next ten years and wanna put these improvements, you're an automatic yes vote, so it's more like a deferral until it's more economical to put these in, and that's, that's kind of been the, the discussion that's been at council, um, when we first, when we seemed to start getting a lot of these, uh, I think it started with the mini storage on Fallon Drive, was one of the first ones. Uh, so that, that's kind of the background, it's not to do these improvements piecemeal.
Right, 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 no, I understand that, I'm not sure if this exactly meets, I, I'm not sure if that does exactly what that is trying to do. I am wondering, I, I am more and more thinking that I'm in agreement with Councilmember Smart. I'm not sure that I like having this, I think that it really should be more as a, when the time comes, just as everybody else would regularly do, it would just be a vote. Uh, it was be a majority if the people in majority wanted to have it, and then it would go to council, and council would say yea or nay, uh, after hearing everybody, I, I would actually, I think, prefer it not to have that particular waiver in it, and I'm wondering, is there anything that would put us at legal risk if we did not include that? I guess that's more of a question for Bronson.
Yeah, it's for Bronson, for us, it's just, we just try to process these consistently and follow the the same, so that we're not arbitrary or comprecious with how our condition is, but leave it up to Bronson, you know.
Yeah, I guess the legal risk is, if, if this is the way that we've processed them in the past, where we had the property owners sign the waivers, and then on this one, we just decided now, we don't want them to sign a waiver, uh, that potentially could be challenged, um, and so if the council wants to do that, then they better decide whether they want this to be their policy going forward, whenever you see another, uh, frontage waiver, uh, when you're frontage improvements, are you going to then not require them to sign the waiver?
Are you saying it'd be a code amendment to take that out of place, which would eliminate us from any potential liability, making exceptions for one individual to another, is that correct, Bronson?
That's right, yes.
Okay, so, I'm wondering then is, would it make more sense to vote to, I hate doing these, to vote to wait on this, and is it going to negatively affect the homeowner and the property owner if we wait on approving this? the homeowner and the property owner if we wait on approving this? I, I'm assuming that it would probably cause in building though, wouldn't it?
That's correct. What, if we, if we, if you didn't want to, if you, if you voted against approving this this evening and wanted to take it back to, to amend the code, the timeframe that it would take to get that done could possibly negatively harm that individual, and we could be potentially liable for, for damages based on delays. Is that correct, Bronson?
So these conditions, council, there's not conditions in the municipal code. These are evaluated by staff. And each one's on a case by case basis. What I'm saying is, in the past, when you've issued frontage waiver, whether it's been with a building permit or a subdivision or division of land, you've, you've requested these things. It's important for council to get these improvements. You, it is not, we don't want to do it piecemeal, and so we've issued these. So there's no code thing. So if you want to do it, I think what Bronson said is, in the future, when these come forward, don't put it on any more of these. But it's not going to, it, it, you know, um, that, that applies to division of land.
Um, right.
I, I, as far as, they've already been issued the building permit. Uh, they can't get C of O until this waiver is done. I don't know where they're at in the, in the process, but I don't know, is the property owner? Is the six oh eight Austin Drive? Here?
She is?
I, I would ask the property owner if they have an issue. I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't think they plan to sell. I don't see a majority of Austin Drive doing a L I D to do street lights or widen the road. So it may be a non-issue.
Okay.
And then have further discussion as we go forward, how you'd like to see these, but I, I wouldn't hold up their request uh on, on this.
So that's, I, I was thinking about that and realizing, I, I don't want to hold up the request, so is that, is that something, uh, Mr. Mayor, that I would be able to do? Could I ask, or could we ask the property owner here right now if they would be willing to? Um, if we were to go ahead and say that we do want to have that waiver so that they wouldn't be able to say no, is that a problem for them? Could we ask that? And have the property member, the property owner uh respond?
Bronson, I'm going to defer to you because the application has been made for the waiver, it's been recommended by count, or by staff to approve the waiver with all said conditions. Uh, that, that's changing, it's changing everything midstream. Is that correct?
So when the applicant put this waiver in, they knew, well, when they put this request in, they knew that they were going to have to sign a waiver. So if they would have had an issue with it, they would have made an application for the frontage improvement. So it's just by the fact of them putting the application in, knowing what the, the um city staff was recommending, knowing that they're going to have to sign a waiver, they still proceeded forward with this application, which should tell council that they don't have an issue with signing the waiver.
Thank you for your explanation.
I'm not sure that I would, eh, eh, thank, yes, thank you for that. I'm, I'm not entirely sure that that would mean that, because I'm sure that if I was given the option of, well, you either can build on your property, but you have this, or you can't build on your property. Well, if I knew that I had get the waiver, if I wanted to do the building, I'd be like, well, fine, I guess I will. Yeah. Over Smart with the thumbs up. So I, I'm not sure that that is a, a a valid assumption. I'm not sure that that is the only way that that could go. I, I don't want to belabor this any longer, but are we able to ask the property owner in this here now to answer in this meeting if they have a problem with, even though they signed it and are in, okay with it enough so that they can get the construction done? Can we just ask, are they okay with, at this point, having that for their not being able to say no to an L I D? Can we ask that right now and have them answer it?
Going to defer to Stephanie and Bronson both on this. We're already so far into the weeds on, on this process. There's been a motion, there's been a second, there's had a conversation, and now you're asking to revisit the whole thing, so.
I just, it's what Ross, Mr. Slade had said and recommended that we do, so that I was at.
Bronson, correct me if I'm wrong, but at this point, there's a motion on the floor to approve the resolution with the conditions. So if council wishes to change that, there could be a motion made to amend that motion. And if that fails, or if that passes, then they can move forward that way. If it fails, they can move forward with the original motion.
Uh, that's correct. So there's, yeah, it's been motioned a second, so that council needs to act on the motion or?
That, that motion would have to be rescinded by the original motion maker to move that forward, correct, Stephanie?
No, so someone could make a motion to amend that motion, which would go to a vote. And if that passes, then that motion would be amended to remove those conditions. Um, and if it fails, then that original motion is still on the floor for approval.
Yeah, and in the past, I know that we've had people that made motions, changed their motion, so that's where I was going with that. Okay. Let's uh, let's listen, let's hear what Councilman Stoker has to say.
Well, can we, can we, I'm, I apologize, but could you answer the question, though? Can we ask the property owner right now if they have an issue? That's all I need to know, because that's what Mr. Slade had recommended that we do if we were worried about, about it. Since they're here.
Well, Bronson?
I think we're, I, I think what we're trying to explain was there's a, there's a motion that's been seconded. And so is council going to take action on the motion? You vote on the motion, or if you don't want to vote on the motion, someone else can amend the motion essentially to withdraw it, and then if you want to take more public testimony from the applicant, you can do so.
Okay, well, then if, if that's the case, I would like to make a motion to amend the motion, and
We're going to go ahead and listen to the other council members to speak first. Councilmember Rand, we're going to listen to the other council members first, and then we'll uh, see where we end up with. Councilmember Stoker.
I think, initially, I was just hoping to get unmuted, so thank you, Stephanie. Um, but I would think that, um, in this situation, if uh, we decide that we want to, say, not go forward this going, you know, in the future with this particular condition, wouldn't we just pass something that would allow us to remove all the previous conditions that had been, um, you know, put into place? Uh, I don't think we need to hold this up necessarily if later on we just do an administrative motion that says all previous conditions will no longer be, uh, you know, with
Of course.
Valid, and we'll just move forward from there. I, I think, I, I really don't want to hold this up. I mean, I'm in agreement, I mean, I hate holding people like this by, you know, by the short hairs or whatever you want to call it, but uh, um, that's just my position. Thank you.
Ju- just to be clear, these are recorded documents, so it's just not something that gets passed by council. You've got to take those original agreements and re-record them at the county. Each one's two hundred and twenty dollars to record, to take that condition off.
Thank you for clarification there, Roscoe. Councilmember Smart?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, um, I just wanted to, I, I, Councilmember Stoker came awfully close, that's what I wanted to say, and that was that there may be an option for us to move forward on this motion tonight as it's proposed. And then uh have an administrative or, or an ordinance passed, uh, or an administrative motion that that just indicates that we will not be enforcing this uh denial of the right to protest on any on any past or, 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 or future, um, uh, you know, property uh frontage waiver uh motion or uh action, so I, I'm trying to say that, you know, these can stand, we can't go remove these, we don't want, just like Bronson or Roscoe just said, we don't want to go but remove these things from titles. And we've done a half dozen or more of them in the last year or two, that have had these kind of stipulations. What we can do is just not enforce it, kind of like we have a rule that says you can't have roosters, but we all agree that we're not enforcing that ordinance at the time being. Um, maybe that'll change in the future, so I think maybe that would be a solution that would get the property owner moving tonight. And we can save our workshop in the future, and um, you know, if, if, um, if Kate wants to make an amendment or a move to make an amendment to this, I would support that. But nevertheless, I think we have to do this other thing. We have to make sure that we're not enforcing anybody else's, or else that's not fair, right? It's not fair to ask one property owner to give up the right to protest and not this property owner and all property owners in the future. So, and then I think that, along with a reassessment of our, of our um complete streets, uh, and what the trigger points are for requiring this type of action in the first place. I, I, I know that I wasn't completely happy with them when they first came around. I'd be happy to readdress those in workshop in the near future. I think it's important. Uh, I, I personally plan to maybe put a uh an addition on our house, uh, in terms of a porch or patio covered. And I think that the square footage will be sufficient, where I'm going to have to ask you for a waiver. So we don't put sidewalks on front of a road that
John, that, that wouldn't, that wouldn't trigger it. It's based on fifty percent of the valuation. So that would be a special, I'd like to see that porch, but uh,
Well.
And, and you, and it's based on the zoning, so yours doesn't have curbed edge sidewalk in your zoning.
Oh, that's good to know. I hadn't talked to Roscoe yet.
So, and again.
The point still stands, that we should reevaluate that.
Yeah, I, I like, again, all staff's trying to do is be consistent.
I, I totally understand. Staff is doing a great job.
Okay, that, that it?
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Blue?
Um, I just want to clarify, I think, discussing, right now, we don't have to uh, you know, it's, it's council discretion not to take, to, to enforce these waivers um, when, when a L I D were to come forward. And so, um, it's possible that we look at the code and make a code revision relative to the L I D process and, and address it without doing the, the, you know, the filing fees, which I recently found, you know, they start adding up really quick. Uh, so, um, I, I would suggest we move forward with the motion that's on the floor and, and stay with that. We, I think we can administratively address the issue separately in our code without redoing.
Seth? Okay. Thank you. So, okay, I saw you nod in your head. Uh, is there something that you wanted to add, or shall I ask for the vote?
Are you talking about me, Ms.?
Yes.
Mayor? I, yes, I, I am, as long as we are um going to follow up with the idea that we're just still going to say, you know, it, we're probably not going to be enforcing these things. I'm okay with that. I don't think laws and contracts out there that they're, they're just going to not enforce personally.
Your audio and your video have froze up and distorted. Can you speak a little closer to your camera, maybe?
Let me turn the camera off, that might, might help. Okay, is this a little bit better? Take up less bandwidth?
Yes, thank you.
There we go. Yes, no worries. Pardon, pardon me. Uh, Mr. Mr. Smart and Mr. Bloom are stealing all of the electron light uh, for our area. Um, yeah, I am, as long as we are going to just go with the idea that we are most likely not going to be enforcing these waivers to not allow them to say no, I'm comfortable with this. I really hope we can have a workshop on this, because I, with the discussion here, it sounds like we've gotten definitely enough for at least one, if not two workshops on it. Um, but uh, yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with not making an amendment and just not really enforcing it, and ban of having contracts and rules that we're not enforcing, that's an entirely different thing, but yeah.
Is it possible for us to not enforce?
No. Bronson, you want to uh, you want to try to explain to Councilmember Rand what we have on front of us? Motion and, and what we're, we're acting on. We can't guarantee anything?
Yeah, so the motion you have before you is, is you're proving the um the waiver of the frontage improvements with the condition that the property owner is signing, um, their waiver to contest an L I D. That's the motion that you have before you. Now, if council takes action after this, some point in the future to change the requirements via L I D, that, that's something council will look at and, and can discuss and evaluate and take action on. But for right now, the motion, the motion on the floor is to um, to waive the, the requirement for the frontage improvements with the condition the property owner has signed the, the waiver to contest an L I D.
Okay, thank you, Bronson. I recognize Councilmember Hayes, you have your hand up? Yeah, you're muted still. Stephanie, can you help her out? There we go. You're on, good.
We need to move forward with this motion. I think it's time to just go ahead and move forward. Thank you.
Okay, we have motion on the floor, a second. We've had a extended discussion. There'll be further discussion in the future on these particular items. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, like, sign? Motion carries an endless. Thank you, council. We're going to go ahead and move on to unfinished business, which we have none of right now. Uh, so this is the time that uh, we're going to talk with new business, which is related to uh a designee of mayor pro temp for twenty twenty-two uh, and twenty twenty-three as per R C W thirty-five A twelve oh sixty-five, which is uh, uh, a whack that the council may use to designate one of their peers as mayor pro temp to serve in the absence of myself. Or hopefully, uh, not the temporary disability of myself, but at times I sometimes wonder as well, so. Uh, with that, I'll uh, ask for a motion for a designee for mayor pro temp this year.
I think I saw Councilmember Farrow's hand up first.
Thank you. Councilmember Farrow?
Are we looking for a recommendation or not, or a motion to?
A, a motion to designate a mayor pro temp for twenty-two and twenty-three.
I motion to designate Fred Brink as mayor pro temp for twenty-two, twenty-three based on his involvement with A W C and his exemplary leadership skills.
I second that.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed?
Pardon, uh, point of, pardon, point of order, uh, do we have to ask three times or at least two more times to make sure that there are no others, just to make it legal?
Yeah, the, the process was to ask for this motion to, for the process to begin, then for there to be nominations, then for there to be an election official, or Stephanie can correct this.
We, we continue until we have a, a majority of the uh voters to designate the, we had a motion for mayor pro temp break.
Okay.
A second for mayor pro temp break. And then we'll have a vote, and if we have a majority agreeing to mayor pro temp break as the designated mayor pro temp for twenty-two and three, motion passes. Is that correct, Stephanie?
Yeah, so if that vote does not pass, then it would move on to a secondary.
I just want to verify that's.
Yeah, you've got it, you've got to have it, you've got to have it pass before you move on to another designated or another motion for another person.
Are we sure that it is not a, you get a nomination, a second for the nomination, and then you ask, are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there nominations? And if by the third time, there are no others, then you go to the vote. Or if you do get them, you do individual votes. I'm more than happy to be incorrect on that. I just, I know that that's been the way it's done.
Is nominate, or it's voted on by simple motion, so um, this is the, I guess, if, if this initial motion that's on the floor does not pass, then it would move on for a secondary nomination.
It's the way it's been done in the past.
This is not an actual motion, it's a nomination. Okay.
It's an action of the council, so it's performed to be a motion.
So is, do I have a motion to designate a mayor pro temp for two thousand and twenty-two and twenty-three? I got a motion and I got a second. Is that correct?
The the motion on the floor was made by council member Fettle and seconded by council member Moran for uh Fred Brink for mayor pro temp for twenty-two, twenty-three.
So then asking for all in favor, say aye. If I have a majority of council, that is the designated pro temp. If we do not get a majority of council, we move on for do I have another motion?
Richard has his handle.
Councilman Blue?
Well, just one question. Uh does the the nominee get to say no? Mr. Brink, are you willing to serve?
I'm willing to take on the task again.
I just wanted to protect myself in the future.
Thank you, council member Bloom for looking.
Okay, so now that we have that clarification, I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote. So I will ask councilman Stoker.
Aye.
Councilman Smart?
Aye.
Councilman Bloom?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Brink?
Aye.
Councilmember Fettle?
Aye.
Councilmember Hayes?
Aye.
Councilmember Moran?
Aye.
Brings us to unanimous vote. Uh, you're the, you're the, you're the man of the hour, Mayor Pro Tim Brink, should I say, the hour and a half. Perfect.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you very much.
And and thank you very much for all that you do. You uh you represent the city very well when I'm unable to uh to attend any uh uh groundbreakings, ribbon cuttings, and uh do a stellar job at uh uh conducting a meeting while I'm not present. I I do go back and and grade you, and I've all had A pluses on all of your meetings run so far. Uh, and thank you, council, for not giving him the hard time. And uh next, next time he runs a meeting for me, let's not make it a record council meeting, because I always get that when I get back, is that meetings are much shorter when I'm gone. All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Uh, so then I also had sent out uh this afternoon, I had earlier requested uh for liaison appointments for uh primary and secondary designees and and I thank everybody for sending me the information and uh uh I I sent back to you today uh what my my choices were based on uh applicant request, and then also if there was a tie, it was a senior um uh seniority vote that uh took the spot for the primary. So everybody's seen uh what I sent out earlier today. Everybody have that uh have that email copy. And if there's anybody that uh has any timeframe constraints or issues that might uh conflict, uh we can uh we can make some arrangements, but if everybody's uh in agreeance to what we have for assignments, I would uh just get a nod for that. Everybody's happy. We're good. Try to make it fair, equitable. Everybody get a chance to do something different if they had the opportunity to, and then also you'll see on the back. Uh, this decision for uh subcommittee meetings is made by staff, and as I mentioned before, we like to move uh council members around, so everybody gets a little flavor for all the different uh assignments, utility streets, personnel, finance, planning, economic development, parks. Uh, so that's uh what we've come up with staff-wise uh for our subcommittees for this next couple of years. So everybody's good with that. We're uh we're gonna go ahead and and roll on. So thank you. I appreciate everybody turning in their homework assignments and and the willingness to participate. Uh, so this is an opportunity. We move on to our second and final public comment session. Uh if anybody would like to address council, uh if you'd raise your virtual hand and or star nine if you're by phone, uh Stephanie will recognize you. It'll give you a three minutes to address council. Stephanie, do you see anybody to see?
I do not see anyone, no.
Then we'll go ahead and move on to staff and council announcements, reports and comments. Is there a staff member? I see a public comment that came up late there. Uh, I see a Shelley. Uh, Stephanie, would you go ahead and note it? Shelley, would you please uh state your name and then place of residence for the record? What city?
Hi, Sully Burt, and I'm live in West Richland.
Okay.
And I I mainly just had a question. I just didn't know uh when we're gonna have these meetings in person.
Although, when we get to hold tight for just a little bit, when we get into our uh staff reports, comments, I'll have uh our clerk Stephanie uh give you an update of what the status is with that.
Okay, thank you. I I know Kennewick is meeting in person now.
Yeah, you have to be be able to create a virtual atmosphere, and uh we're still waiting on equipment to be able to do that with our council chambers, but she can give you an update and and counsel and update us to the status of that. Until then, with the emergency order the governor has, we would be uncompliant to the Open Public Meetings Act if we were not able to offer that particular service to the public.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, okay, so staff. I see Mr. Slate.
As if I didn't talk enough already. I'm gonna hear about it at our next senior staff meeting. Um, just an update on the South Thirty-Eighth Van Geest and Signal Project. Uh, we've got delays with fabrication and shipping uh things, so that's now a February completion. So that's getting pretty frustrated. It's down to just the control cabinet that needs to be fabricated. It's got to go over to Olympia to let DOT run their testing on it before it gets installed, so basically a thirty-day push uh in addition to the ninety days that this project's already got pushed. It's it's frustrating. We want it to be complete, but it it's it's out of our control with that. Um, the the second issue um deals with Collins Road. Um, I don't know if if council or the mayor have been getting emails. Um, but uh basically getting complaints, I'd say off and on for the last three years, and it's not a consistent. It depends really where you live at on Collins. So if you're closer to Bonn Range, your complaint is is people are driving too fast. If you're at the other end of Collins, the posted speed is too low. Um, and so um we've spent uh an enormous amount of time working through our engineering staff with the police department uh to try to mitigate some of the issue. Um, you know, they've, we've done traffic counts to try to see. We typically do that. Those traffic counters don't just tell you the number of vehicles. They will tell you how fast the vehicle is going. Um, and so uh typically, if you got a speeding complaint and it's consistent that, you know, the same guy's going to work or gal's going to work at seven o'clock or seven fifteen, we can provide that information to the police department, so they don't have to sit there all day to uh help change that behavior. Um, and so we've done that. We did some counts in twenty twenty. And it showed, uh, it's kind of shocking. Uh, it's really that the top of the hill at Fifty-Fourth going down to Bonn Range, where um, you know, typically we get complaints of speeding. Speeding is not just to your your neighbor or your local street. It happens periodically on any street in the town, so it's not unique. What we're seeing with Collins is uh it's spread out pretty much through the day. And just the volume or the uh, so the percentage of cars that are over and the number, the sheer number is uh surprising. Um, you know, typically, I don't want to speak for the chief, but they're not writing tickets for five over. You need to be in the ten to fifteen foot, you know, mile an hour range, and that's what we're seeing. You know, when you've got sixty percent of cars or a hundred and twenty cars, that's pretty consistent. And so we saw that in twenty twenty. Um, and so they've done some enforcement. Um, it's not like they can camp out on Collins, and you know, when when they're there, they write a few tickets and corrects it for a while, but then that behavior comes back. And uh, we've seen it in twenty twenty-one with recent counts. Um, not as bad. We don't have the sheer number. Um, but it's still at a a level that's that gives us pause. And the idea uh was that we were gonna do a formal um analysis um at the city level and try to figure out what makes Collins unique. Why do we have this uh issue? And but my engineers are busy, so I'm getting emails. I tell them, I've got your information. We got the traffic counts. We need to do an analysis. Unfortunately, please be patient. Well, you know, after several months of that and not being able to get a timeframe, you know, I talked to the mayor today and the chief about coming to council and discussing this and looking at um using a consultant for this. You know, this is something we can do in-house, but I can't do it today. Can't. Matter of fact, I don't know if I can get to it this year. I mean, but um if we want to make it a priority and look at this, and again, it's unique. I mean, we, like I said, there's other people or other places at speed, but this one's got some unique things. The the cost is about seven thousand dollars to have a consultant do it. Where they go and look at the existing conditions on Collins, review the accident history. Uh, they'll look at our speed data that we've already collected. Uh, they'll they'll uh evaluate the functional classification. So Collins is not a local roadway. That's a collector. It's federally classified. And they're gonna just look at the speed limit. And so it's just like uh I can go post Keen Road at twenty-five miles an hour, but if that isn't reasonable, people aren't gonna drive it. And so part of that ask is them to evaluate the posted speed limit. Is it reasonable at twenty-five, or should it be higher? That's not what some of the residents want. They actually want it lower or enforced or speed humps. So other part of the equation will be looking at uh traffic calming and look at that. And so it's gonna get a a wide range of analysis on that roadway to identify potential recommendations. And the recommendations, you know, like I said, could be traffic calming. Uh, get requests to put speed humps on the side of the hill, which you you don't do. They have specific areas where they're effective, but we also have some issue with snowplows not being able to maneuver over them, but regardless, you don't put those on um sides of steep hills. Um, and we don't try things. I've got residents ask me, just try it. Uh, in our line of work as an engineer, you don't try things. You do an you analysis. You use standard guidelines and engineering practices. Uh, otherwise, you end up in liability when trying something ends up somebody crashing on it, so that we don't do that. Um, and you know, as an engineer. And so the so the the ask tonight is, is council interested? Um, it would take a future budget amendment out of the general fund ending fund balance, because the street fund doesn't carry a balance, to go hire a consultant to do this analysis on Collins Road so that I can uh address this issue, um because the expectation to continue to have the chief have officers out there i- is not a reasonable uh thing. There's other things in the city. Um, than to try to sit there. Again, it's not a specific time period. It's pretty consistent all day. And in the past, we've tried it, and it just hasn't mitigated the situation. So that's what's before you. Um, kind of looking for a head nod. If this is something you're interested in, then I can work with Aaron the next time a budget amendment's put together in the future to add this item, so we can do it. Um, again, it's seven thousand dollars for the analysis. It'll take four, three to four weeks uh for the consultant to complete it, and then my uh probably process would be to then take it back. Whatever the recommendations are, back to the utility street committee to review and and if there's any recommendations that come out, then bring that to the full council after that, so. That was it. So just kind of looking, head nod on that.
Let's uh, let's go ahead and and go through the rest of the staff, Roscoe, and as we have our have our council members roll through their comments, as you've been taking give you a nod or a nay or something like that. We're not voting on it. We just got to figure out whether you want to spend seven thousand dollars on something that's definitely unique, and we haven't been able to deal with in the past, and it may take this to get us to that conclusion. Stephanie?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to follow up on um the hybrid meetings. Um, so I did get an email from our contractor um last week it was, and they are anticipating the materials for our council chambers to arrive tomorrow. And once they have those materials, they will provide me with an estimate uh for when they can come down and um install those. So I'm, they originally had given me an estimate of the end of January, so it sounds like that we're in line with that. Uh, but at this point, they don't know if those materials will in fact arrive tomorrow. So once that happens, once we get that installed, um, I'll work with the mayor to establish procedures for having uh hybrid meetings and then move forward um towards that goal.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie. Much appreciated. It's been a long time waiting for the back order, the back order, the back order, sitting out in the harbor, right? Okay, thanks. Uh, Eric?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, members of the council, just wanted to give you an update on last year's numbers uh for development. So last year, we set records yet again. Um, we had a total number of inspections were seven thousand four hundred and forty-two. I think I shared some of that information last time with you guys. That's up almost uh over fifty percent of what we did last year. Um, new single-family homes, we had two hundred and fifty-five with uh seventy-five new multifamily units uh get permitted this last year. So that's up thirty, or no, sorry, up ten percent of what we did last year total. And then we had two new commercial uh structures that were permitted, the police station, which is finished. Um, I'm surprised Ben's not tuning his horn on the open house and making sure everybody's invited. Uh, it's been been the drum he's been beating all the last couple of weeks, and excited for him, excited for all the police officers and their new facility. Um, and then we have also, we permitted the Sun Market with the firehouse subs, which is just out front of City Hall here. And they're, um, I believe, planning on opening towards the end of next month, but might be pushed out to March, depending on, they're in the same boat that we are with uh materials. You, they're scheduled to be delivered and everything else, but then the delivery date comes and you're pushed out a little bit. So excited for them. Um, and excited for all of what we did last year and anticipating the same for this upcoming year. Um we kicked off the Lewis and Clark Ranch planning effort last week, so we're gonna be um putting together some of the well, we have to issue a determinative determination of significance here soon, which will start the scoping process for analysis, environmental review of the ranch and what that will be. Uh, but we hopefully will have that wrapped up by the end of this year, first of next year um for the planning effort, and that's gonna be exciting. Um, hopefully COVID will die down and we'll be able to have more uh open public meetings and get people involved and get their input on that process and be able to get a good plan put together for that coming. So excited for this year and what this year is going to bring and the great opportunities that will provide for us here in the city.
Thank you, Eric. Okay, so we need to get, Eric, you need to get uh two things for, you need to get a a a yes and a no card for council member Hayes and council member Stoker. So, you know, as Roscoe was mentioning, and you know, the the consultant would be the the best way for us to go, we feel, in-house here for a analysis of a very unique situation on Collins. So uh, if you've got your yes and no cards, let's let's give him a a nod or a thumbs down on on that. So if you if you want us to get that consultant going, uh, I've got see.
I don't know where my card is.
Thumb up or thumb down? One, two, three. One, two, three. Where is? Keep your stuff up there for a second. I'm counting. Stephanie, you counting too?
Uh, yes, but we're not formally voting, so.
I'm just counting.
So number of thumbs would be four thumbs up and then three pink cards.
Okay. All right, Roscoe, there you go.
I'll work on it with the finance director and bring something back at a future council meeting for formal action.
And discussion at that time. Perfect. Uh, councilman Bloom?
I thought I would start um. So obviously uh the police haven't caught my wife yet. Um. Uh, yeah, it'd be interesting to know as far as Collins goes, uh the experience on it. Uh, yeah, it'd be interesting to know as far as Collins goes, uh, the experience on it. I'm I'm not one I I go down in lower, but uh I, there are a number of people, and I know my former neighbor had a number of people speeding up the hill. Which is uh, you know, somewhat of the uh, it lends to the you know, flavor that, you know, maybe it's too slow. But if you've ever gone up Collins, direct people up Collins uh to where I am on fifty-eight, I said you go up Collins till you get to the top and then you get to the other top. You know what I mean? So uh, Collins is an interesting thing. I I would suggest we just put up some slowdown signs. But um, that that might be too simple. Um. Uh, the uh last uh council meeting, I wasn't feeling very well. I did subsequently go through the drive-through and got my test. Uh, I I passed my test. I had COVID. And but my wife, who was actually having different and more COVID-like symptoms, she didn't have COVID. So I'm still of the the thought that that was my tenth COVID test that I've taken in my COVID career. And I'm I'm thinking statistically I was due to fail. Anyway, um. Uh, I will, I've made arrangements and the chief has uh arranged for me to take my tour of the new facility next Monday. I appreciate that. Um, and at the last uh council meeting, I mentioned that we would be uh selecting between two individuals for the interim Ben Franklin Transit general manager and uh the two individuals we considered were both former Ben Franklin Transit employees, one being Ed Frost and the other being Ken Ham. Ken Ham had more recently been the uh uh operations director. Uh, the but Ken currently lives in Spokane and wanted to commute back and forth and both were highly qualified for the job. Um. And we chose Ed Frost and he will be coming on board to take over Ben Franklin Transit until we have a new uh a new uh select a new general manager. Things are going on at Men Franklin Transit. One of the reasons I wanted to go tour our facilities, we just got a estimate on the new Ben Franklin Transit building and it seems to be way out of whack, especially on the outside. So I want to see what we did see if there's something we can learn from that. Um, there may be a opening on the Yakima Basin Fish and Wildlife Recovery Board Citizens Committee. Uh, this is a committee that actually chooses which projects get done. Um, and there, um, so if if anybody knows of anyone that's interested in participating, um, unfortunately, last couple of years, it's been virtual. Uh, I like the Aqua Fish Wildlife Recovery Board activities because actually you get to go tromp through the woods of you know, various areas. Uh, but uh we've been virtual for way too long, so hopefully, things will get over. I I think everybody will end up getting COVID before it's all over. Uh, mine was just a very mild case, so was my wife's. And then last but not least, what you voted on today was the subject of the first SWAC meeting in a long time. Roscoe attended and it was actually in-person virtual group meeting. Um, and basically what it's the precursor of is after twelve years, Roscoe, I believe it's been that that I've been on SWAC. I took over from uh, Ken Doman way back when. Uh. We are on the verge of maybe getting a moderate risk waste facility built or at least constructed and started to operate so that uh we won't be having the uh the collection events that we've had in the past, which really are not that effective. They'll be open basically every weekend. And uh hopefully bring some more candy into the waste disposal. That's about it.
Hey, thank you, Councilmember Bloom. Councilmember Moran this evening?
Thank you very much. Uh, first, I'd like to say congratulations to Mayor Pro Tim Brink for being Mayor Pro Tim again. Congratulations. Uh, I would like to mention that one of the reasons that I uh had raised the pink was because as somebody who drives on Collins often, pretty sure I can save you seven thousand dollars and say that people are just gonna go fast on it as hell. Uh, I struggle to get up to twenty-five most of the time to go up it. And I struggle to ride my brakes all the way down to try and get close to twenty-five. Um, if you got a heavy vehicle, you're gonna go pretty fast, even on your brakes. Uh, so there you go. I saved a seventy, there's seven thousand. Uh. But uh, other than that, I am just happy to be back here. I know that the last meeting that we were at, I was ill. I was finally able to verify that it was not COVID. Uh, it was just a very cold. Uh, so I have once again done bullet and have yet so far to have a positive COVID test. So fingers crossed, knocking on all the wood. Um, other than that, I am also very glad to be back on BF Cog. Got a lot of stuff going on this year. I will make sure to update everybody with what went on. Um. We're gonna be meeting with a representative from Senator Murray's office this Friday for our meeting and uh, I have asked the mayor and uh Mr. Slate and Mr. Minnall if they have any questions that I submit for them, but it sounds like we're all good. I will bring back at our next meeting what all we heard at that BF Cog meeting so that everybody's kept apprised of what's going on. Thank you so much.
And Kate, if you would, don't forget to thank him for all the uh help and participation that they put forth with our staff and and their staffs uh of from the new house, Murray and and Catwell's offices for every effort that they made uh through our applications of uh of grant funding. So tell them thank you.
Absolutely, I will do that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
If you still have, let me know and I'll pop them in.
Okay, Councilmember Fettow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, sorry, I missed last meeting. My employer made me go to Seattle and at the time of our meeting, I was stuck on Skrimack for fifty-five minutes, waiting for the plane to leave, and I am claustrophobic. So I was have a little freak out on the plane. I'd rather have been here and I'm not going back. Um, so uh, wanna say um, welcome, May. Congratulations. Uh, Ken, welcome back. Ken was my seatmate for my first year, couple of months. So glad to see you back. Um, and um and then one last thing, Stephanie, thank you so much for the digital uh handbook. I've already used it a couple of times. That's awesome. Instead of flipping through the thing, it's easy just to click on a little tab and have it take you right to the subsection. So thank you for that. That's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Smart?
Oh, yes, Mr. Mayor, Council, audience. Um. So let's see, I wanted to uh add to my previous comments that if we do pursue an educational effort on um LED LIDs or road improvements, that that perhaps there could be, I think this was mentioned, a um, a page on our website. It seems to be a frequent question that comes up about how much how do you get a street improvement? And maybe if we just answered it by the website, we could avoid uh other questions. And also, if we could maybe uh, I don't know, obviously you can't uh predict costs. Uh, each street's a little different, but they might try to include something that gives folks a little bit of an idea of how much it costs to build. You know, uh eighty feet of road and sidewalk and what a street light costs and so forth, just to give folks an idea. Um, Collins, I drive it, well, not as often as I used to. Stuck at home almost every day, but uh, but yeah, I still get up and down Collins and I made a report on that to city council back in around two thousand and nine, I think. Um, and noted that there are at least three blind spots. I added, I had a PowerPoint presentation with photos. Um, there are blind spots. Uh, this is what makes it, not only is it a very steep road and straight, but it's it's dangerous because you, there are at least three times when you go up and down Collins where you cannot see the road ahead of you more than maybe a hundred and fifty, two hundred feet out. So, yeah, people do go fast. I've actually talked personally with one of the residents down at the bottom of the hill who mentioned to me that they were upset with the the speed of people going up and down. I um advocated for it not to be a arterial, which was planned at one time or proposed or something of that nature. And and advocated for uh getting it striped, which helped a lot. Because before the center line was put on, people were, they had no guidance. They would drive right up the middle of the road. So the striping helps a lot with keeping folks on the right side of the road. Um, the speed limit was set at twenty-five. I don't know how that deter was determined, but um, I didn't argue with it because it's a, it's safe and and there are people that have driveways that come out onto that road. Um, I, however, personally, if you were to ask me, I probably would have said it at thirty. Uh, just because the gearing, I've got a fleet of seven cars with our family. And every one of those vehicles has a hard time going up the hill at 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 the twenty-five miles an hour. It's it's you certainly can do it and and it's every driver's responsibility to control their vehicles. I'm sure the chief would would tell us. And we can do it. You can ride the brakes. You can stay slow on the way down, but but I wouldn't argue with thirty, but I would also um look for ways to enforce that better and uh maybe make residents more aware of the dangers. And so one thing I would mention, um, and the reason I I didn't give the thumbs up uh right away on on the on the consultant idea is that maybe there are blind spot signs that we could put up or slowdown signs, which wouldn't be experiments. Those are actual things that you could do um and see if that helps, but we'll talk about that more. Um, the last thing I wanted to mention is that uh hopefully my desire would be that in discussions on the Lewis and Clark development that we are considering uh cul-de-sacs in that road layout. So I will just continue to mention this. Um, I would uh hate to see our city develop with a strict grid pattern without um cul-de-sacs or bump outs or places where people can have residences, where children can uh play in the street as they will want to do and be much safer than as if they're on a straightaway. So I see that um, submit mentioned before, I've got relatives that live on a cul-de-sac. Uh, people purposefully buy homes on cul-de-sacs with small children. Um, you can see it everywhere and and they use that cul-de-sac for riding their bikes and playing kickball and and what else. And so I I just want to encourage that we don't neglect our our street design. Go for the easy way out of making them straight and narrow or straight and 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 try to put some aesthetic value and some livability qualities in our in our neighborhoods. So that's all I have for tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Hayes?
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you to all the city staff that have been so welcoming to me in this position and very, very helpful with all my questions. I tend to have a lot of questions, so um, everybody that I've met with so far, Eric and Roscoe and Stephanie and the list goes on. Um, but thank you guys, cuz um, when you run for a city council position until you get into it, you you really don't know what it really entails. And so it's been an eye-opener and to me, it's just very challenging the things that I'm gonna be able to learn and I'm excited about the subcommittees and stuff that I've been um, assigned to. So I look forward to really getting involved with the city working with the residents and the businesses um to make this a better place to live. So thank you to y'all.
And again, welcome, May. Thank you for your comments. Uh, there's a lot I could go over this evening, but we do have an executive session, so I'm just gonna touch briefly to our legislative session that is in session right now and keep an eye out for AWSC's uh emails to you and particular uh bills that may be uh uh detrimental to our community and or our citizens and specifically law enforcement. Uh, so do please respond when they ask you to uh contact their your legislators uh and and get involved and be a be a steward for uh for your citizens that elected you to do so. So I would encourage that. So with that, I'll uh, I'll I'll leave my COVID speech aside because everybody knows what it is. It is what it is and uh it will be for a while to come. So with that, we're gonna go ahead and uh adjourn the uh uh adjourn into an executive session per RCW forty-two thirty-one ten C, uh which is the minimum price which real estate can be offered for sale or lease. Uh, there is no action to follow this evening on this. So everybody hold tight for just a second while I'll ask Stephanie to uh say thank you to our guests this evening and then we'll uh we'll move on. Stephanie, you let me know when you're ready.
Do you have an estimated time for this?
Uh, I'm gonna say we're gonna be a probably a fifteen-minuter.
All right, thank you.